Good evening. Welcome to the May 11th, 2015 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Lee Hart from Woodside Bible Church with us this evening to lead us in the invocation. If you could move forward to the podium and please rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance after the invocation. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to have the privilege of being here. Let's pray together. Father, we are especially grateful for the way that you care for us and provide for us. And we give you the thanks and praise for the opportunity that is before us this evening. I thank you for each one of our city's leaders and our mayor. And I ask, Lord, this evening, that you would bless this meeting, that you would give clarity and wisdom and energy for all that will be discussed. We thank you, Lord, again, for the opportunity to say that we live in a free land and that you are our sovereign God. We thank you again this evening, Lord, for the opportunities and privileges that you give to us. Thank you for your protection and for your provision as well. And it's for all of these things, and according to your name, that we pray and give thanks. Amen.
All right. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Mayor Protem Campbell? Councilmember Gottlieb?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
We did receive correspondence from Mayor Protem Campbell that he would be out of the state this evening, so I will move that we excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Campbell at the regular City Council Meeting of May the 11th, 2015, due to being out of state. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Campbell at this regular City Council Meeting of May 11th, 2015. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell? Sorry. Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes. Motion passes. I was hoping that wasn't a fire alarm. Our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. C1 is the Economic Development Update with a presentation by Glenn Laypin, the economic development specialist. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council members. I'd like to bring you up to date on economic development activity taking place here in the city of Troy. We continue to see positive progress in both the office and industrial markets. According to CBRE, which is the leading international commercial real estate services company, Troy's office vacancy rate, excluding the Kmart headquarters, in the first quarter of 2015 was 20.3 percent. This compares to a vacancy rate of one year ago of about 22.8 and a five-year vacancy average of 25.1 percent. Along with the declining vacancy rates, we're seeing office rents starting to creep up a little bit, up to $18.58 per square foot compared to the five-year average of $18.29 per square foot. So, positive on all fronts in terms of the office market. On the industrial side, in the first quarter of 2015, the vacancy rate was 4.1 percent. This compares to a one-year ago of about 6 percent and a five-year vacancy average of 10.2 percent. Industrial rents per square foot are also rising, $6.27 per square foot in the first quarter compared to the five-year average of $5.16 per square foot. Industrial market is very tight in terms of the availability of buildings. We're seeing that not just here in Troy, but across the region as well. On the map, you'll see some of the projects that are taking place currently within the past quarter. I'd like to highlight just a couple of them at this time. Ascension Health, which is the parent of St. John Providence Health Systems, will be leasing a significant amount of space, about 43,000 square feet, in the Osprey Building, which is on Laverne, just behind Big Beaver, behind the Kona Grill and the post office in that area. They expect to lease that space and to occupy it in about, probably another month or two, we expect. We expect about 220 employees to be located there. It's administrative offices, not healthcare services at that location. On Coolidge, 1300 Coolidge, the old Vima property, which has been vacant for a number of years across from Midtown Square, has been purchased by HA Automotive. HA Automotive is an automotive lamp manufacturer out of China. They are currently undergoing some renovations in that space. Over five years, they expect to invest about $28.8 million, a significant investment. It's about 115,000 square feet. It'll be good to clean up that property because it's been vacant for so long and becoming a blighting influence. So, looking forward to occupancy there, probably in the fourth quarter of 2015. About 368 people are expected to be employed there over that five-year period. In addition to the projects mentioned from the map, we continue to be involved in collaboration with our partners to help our businesses here in the city of Troy. We are a full member of Tech 248, which is an Oakland County initiative. Tech 248 targets the 2,000 technology companies here in the city and in the county as well. And the reason why this program is developed was to help those companies interact with each other, to improve branding, to help them with talent acquisition, which is so critical in that industry. And we see a number of those companies here in Troy, so we're very interested in being a good partner in that. We are part of the Southeast District, along with Birmingham, Ferndale, Madison Heights, Royal Oak, and Pleasant Ridge. We'll be holding a meetup event, which is a core part of this program. About every month or so, these meetup events are spread around the county. The Southeast District, which Troy will be a part of, will be hosting the event that's coming up on May 21st. It'll be located at 365 Retail Markets. Basically, it's a chance for the tech community to come together, about 80 to 100 representatives from those companies, to hear about the latest news in the tech industry and to basically network with each other and to get to know each other better. We continue to work with programs that are advantageous to us. And these programs, such as the One Stop Ready Program through Oakland County, the Medical Main Street Program, which is also a county initiative, we work very closely with Automation Alley, particularly on the local development finance authority, on the Smart Zone, that we're working on currently, which we'll hear an update on later on. And we continue to share information and resources in order to help these programs and to help the businesses here in the county and in the city as well. So, any questions? Be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Glenn. Any questions for Glenn? More good news? It's always good to hear.
It is. Thank you.
Thank you. C2 is the Police Memorial Day Proclamation. It's my honor to present the proclamation to the Chief of Police, Gary Mayer. If I could meet him at the podium, I'd like to make a presentation. As I indicated, this is an honor for me on behalf of the City Council, the city administration, to present the proclamation for Police Memorial Day. And if I could, I'd like to read most of this. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States has designated May 15th of each year to be Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Memorial Week. And whereas our law enforcement officers are guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free, warriors in the battle against crime, and are dedicated to the preservation of life and property. And whereas our community desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of its own police officers, and if I could, I'd like to have all the City Council come down here with me as I finish reading the proclamation and do the presentation, because I think Whereas the city of Troy will observe Police Memorial Day on Thursday, May 14th, 2015, with the dedication ceremony in the front of the Troy Police Department, which is located just south of here. So, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Troy hereby proclaims May 14th, 2015, as Police Memorial Day in the city of Troy, and call upon all our citizens to make every effort to express appreciation to these men and women who are willing to sacrifice their lives, if necessary, to guard us and our loved ones against all who would violate the law. Be it further resolved that we invite all citizens to reflect and remember three officers, Charles Mettana, Martin Chivvis, and Charles Mulvihill, who lost their lives in the service of our community. These men will forever be remembered for their ultimate sacrifice. Presented this 11th day of May, 2015, signed by myself, all members of the City Council. Thank you on behalf of us.
I thank you on behalf of all the men and women of the Troy Police Department, not just myself. We all appreciate the support we get from the City Council, and we all appreciate this remembrance of such an important day for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, there are no carryover items this evening, so we will move to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening, the adoption of the 2015-16 Annual City Budget and Three-Year Budget, with an introduction by City Manager Brian Kishnik. I will open the public hearing and turn it over to City Manager Kishnik.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council. I want to commend a lot of people who have worked on this budget over probably the last six weeks directly and then time before that, but the staff has worked very hard on this budget. And the Financial Ideas Team was something we instituted this year, and they've put a lot of time and energy into this process as well. Then, of course, the City Council, over two meetings, were pleased to present a balanced budget with the same tax structure as last year. So, there are no millage increases. And we do have a pretty significant emphasis on fire and infrastructure roads in this budget, similar to last year. And it does represent a one-year budget for the library due to the funding question that's still outstanding and needs to be resolved. So, there is dedicated millage funding for the library for this next year, and that's what we are presenting in the library. So, it's been a, this is probably our toughest budget since I've been here, with everything that's going on and the complexity of it, but I think the staff and council and the Financial Ideas Team did a great job. So, with that, I'd answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Not hearing any. I will close the public hearing, return it to the table for discussion and a resolution. Any questions for staff at the beginning? Councilman Henderson.
I'd like to move E1, Adoption of the 2015-16 Annual City Budget and Three-Year Budget as printed.
Move by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve E1 as printed in the agenda this evening. Discussion.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderick.
I just wanted to echo the thanks that the city manager gave to staff, to the citizens that participated in the Financial Ideas Team for the input. And I just wanted to comment that here in this moment, it probably looks fairly easy and that not much time or thought has been put into the budget, but this is the binder that came home to council members. We had two study sessions, I want to point out again. The city manager and staff have facilitated a number of study sessions, even over the past couple of years, that helped set a standard of just an outstanding, conservative, fiscally responsible budget for the city that protects our bond rating while ensuring the best services that we can provide, protects safety and infrastructure, which are key priorities. And I guess I just, I want to make sure that people know the time, the thought, the study, the thinking, the strategic thinking that went into it. And it's been a pleasure to work with staff and fellow members of council on the process.
Thank you. Any other discussion? As I indicated in our study session, I think it's a testament to how well you present a budget when you don't get a lot of questions from the council itself. This has been a long process and well-presented, very transparent, and I echo the thanks to everyone that's involved in this. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. I did talk to Mayor, motion passes, and I did happen to talk to Mayor Protem Campbell, and he would have voted yes this evening had he been here. Next on the agenda is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy Residents and Businesses. I don't see that anyone has signed up for that this evening, so there are no postponed items. So, we will move to regular business. First item of business is board and committee appointments. There are no mayoral appointments this evening. We have three city council appointments this evening, and I will defer to Councilwoman Hoderick.
Mayor? Thank you. I would like to move that we appoint Dave Henderson as the City Council Rep for the term expiring April 15th, 2018, to the Employee Retiree System Board of Trustees, Retiree Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust. And in addition, a second appointment for the student vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Board. I would like to appoint Kathleen Reagan for the term expiring July 31st, 2016.
I think I forgot to point out there is an appointment for the student vacancy, also for the Liquor Advisory Committee. I'm sorry about that, but if you could.
Yes, for the Liquor Advisory Committee, for the term expiring July 31st, 2016. Elizabeth Silicon for the student vacancy.
Moved by Councilwoman Hoderick and supported by Councilman Gottlieb, that we appoint Dave Henderson as the City Council Rep to the Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees, Retirement Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust for the term that expires 4/15/2018. Elizabeth Slifkin, the student appointment to the Liquor Advisory Committee for the term that expires 7/31/2016. And Kathleen Reagan to the student vacancy for the Parks and Recreation Board term that expires 7/31/2016. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations to those persons, and thank you for your service. I2 is Board and Committee Nominations. I have one mayoral nomination this evening. I will nominate Joseph Vascello to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board for the term that expires 4/30/2018. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we nominate Joseph Vascello to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the term that expires 4/30/2018. Discussion. Vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. There are no City Council nominations this evening, so we will move to I3, A Request for Closed Session, City Manager Evaluation. Somebody like to move the resolution. Councilman Henderson.
I'd like to move I3, resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session on May 11th, 2015, in the council boardroom pursuant to MCL 15.268A and H, MCL 15.243G, for the evaluation of the city manager.
By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Gottlieb, that we approve I3, A Request for Closed Session, City Manager Evaluation, as presented in red this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. I4 is a request to set a date for closed session for city attorney evaluation. I will move the resolution that we shall meet in closed session on May 18th, 2015, after the City Council meeting in the council boardroom pursuant to MCL 15.268A and H, MCL 15.243G, for evaluation of the city attorney. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Gottlieb, that we approve I4 as read into the agenda this evening, or May the 18th. Discussion. Councilman Teetz.
Just for those people watching at home, these are the standard annual, yeah, annual evaluations, nothing out of the ordinary. So, I just thought I'd say, in case someone was wondering at home, what in the world's going on? Well, that's what's going on, so.
Yeah, we made that decision a year or so ago that we would do it before budget session, so standard operating procedure now. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is I5, An Amendment to Chapter 20, Water and Sewer Rates of the Troy City Code, with a presentation by Tom Dowling, the Financial Services Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council. What you have in front of you this evening is a required amendment to the city code to reflect the new proposed water and sewer rates discussed at our budget study sessions. These proposed rates are $34.40 per unit of water and $25.30 per sanitary sewer unit. These rates reflect, in part, the direct increase to the city by the Detroit Water and Sewer Department and the Oakland County Water Resource Council.
Any questions for Mr. Dowling? Somebody like to move that resolution. Councilman Gottlieb.
I'd like to move that the amendment to Chapter 20, Water and Sewer Rates of the city of Troy City Code. You want me to read it in?
It would be preferable.
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves an amendment to Chapter 20 of the Troy City Code, water and sewer rates, and that the water connection fee schedule, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting, be approved.
Moved by Councilman Gottlieb, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve I5 as written this evening and read. Just to reiterate, we're not charging, we're not passing along as much as what is being charged to the city at this point.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor, in part.
In part. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Motion passes. I6, The Approval of the Troy Downtown Development Authority's Proposed Fiscal Year 2015-16 Budget, Presentation by Director of Economic and Community Development, Mark Miller. Good evening, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm proud to present the Downtown Development Authority budget to you this evening. On April 15th, the DDA did recommend and approve this budget, and I will say that this, we have some really positive news in this budget, and we'll get to that, in that the 2013 TIF and Development Plan Amendment, which eliminated the properties which were in negative drawn tax capture, has had a very positive effect on the tax capture. Therefore, besides being able to pay the bonds which were floated by the city with their full faith and credit AAA bond rating, we're also able to fund the enhanced island maintenance, so we will take care from sidewalk to sidewalk, including the median. We projected last year that the city would have to assist the DDA, but in this budget, that will be totally covered by the DDA. So, there are approximately $1.17 million of revenue that come in each year from the tax capture, and to service the bonds, it's just about $950,000. So, that does leave the funding available for the island maintenance and to pay for audit fees and things of that nature. I will note, going off in fiscal year 2017 and 18, there will be enough tax capture to also reimburse the city $25,000 for administrative fees. So, with that, I would recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miller? Somebody like to move that resolution. Councilman Gottlieb.
I'd move that we accept the approval of the Troy Downtown Development Authority's Proposed Fiscal Year 2015-16 Budget, whereas the Troy Downtown Development Authority has adopted and recommends that the City Council approve its proposed fiscal year 2015-16 budget and three-year budget. Therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby approves the Troy Downtown Development Authority's Annual Budget for fiscal year July 1, 2015, through June 30th, 2016, and three-year budget.
By Councilman Gottlieb, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve I6, The Approval of the Troy Downtown Development Authority's Proposed Fiscal Year 2015-16 Budget, as read into record this evening. Discussion. Councilman Henderson.
Just a real quick thank you to Mr. Kishnik and staff on the out-of-the-box thinking that was required to put this plan together, save the DDA, and as we see this year, very good results. Thanks.
Absolutely. I was going to say that this is a direct result of somebody that put together an outstanding plan that not only saved the DDA, but saved our AAA bond rating. And thank you, Mr. Kishnik. It was the first thing I know that you had to deal with when you were hired two and a half, three years ago. I think this was number one on the agenda, and I don't think it could have worked out any better. So, thank you.
Not to belabor the point, but...
Not to belabor the point, but it was a real team effort from the attorney's office, our office, and people who didn't get any work from the city who helped us solve the problem, so I give everyone the credit. I just know how to listen.
That you do. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. I seven, the approval of the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, B R A, with proposed fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen budget, also a presentation by Mark Miller, Director of Economic and Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Mayor and Council again. On April twenty-first, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority approved and recommended approval of this budget. I would like to sort of give a real quick history of what a Brownfield Redevelopment Authority does. It creates districts, individual districts, and we have two of them, one for the TCF Bank at Maple Road and Coolidge, and the MGR Digital Theater. And so it allows for the capture of increased tax valuation to pay for cleanup contamination, but also demolition. Those are eligible. And so, for TCF Bank, in an upcoming fiscal year, we capture about two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, and then that goes directly back to TCF Bank to pay for eligible expenditures which were in their plan. For the MGR property, we'll capture ninety-one thousand six hundred and seventy dollars, and that will go not to pay MGR, because all of their eligible expenditures were paid last year, but to our revolving loan fund. And our revolving loan fund, as of now, has about eighty-eight thousand dollars into it in it, and then we're projecting next year, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, and then slowly going off in the second, third years, it will build up to about three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, if we don't loan out any other money. That's where we're at, and we recommend approval of the budget.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miller? Councilman Gottlieb?
Got it.
You're on a roll.
All right. I recommend that we accept the approval of the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, B R A, proposed fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen budget.
As printed in the?
As printed.
Moved by Councilman Gottlieb, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve I seven, approval of the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, B R A, proposed fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen budget, as printed in the agenda. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Motion passes. I eight is the approval of the Joint Local Development Finance Authority Troy Subcommittee Proposed Fiscal Year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen budget, also presented by Mark Miller, Director of Economic and Community Development, and I will point out, there is a yellow sheet that was placed on the table this evening for council, which is a copy of the budget.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Miller?
On April twenty-seventh, the Troy Committee of the Local Development Finance Authority recommended approval of this budget. I will remind you that our Automation Alley Smart Zone, L D F A, exists because we created it jointly with the city of Southfield, and I want to note that, because the purpose of this L D F A is to provide funding for Automation Alley and the L D F A District, and over the years, we've provided infrastructure support directly to Automation Alley when they first built the building, and we provide operations assistance, and this budget does include sixty-one thousand two hundred dollars for Automation Alley operations assistance. I would note that we bring in about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in tax capture, and that is still going down a little bit, it's going to, in the next couple more years, it goes down to a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Also in this budget, there is seventy-two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars set aside for infrastructure, and we're projecting that be used for Move Across Troy. As you know, we are working on preliminary designs for that. Also, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for membership in Automation Alley. With that, we recommend approval of the budget, and with, I also will note that upcoming, when we will update you on the extension process for, for this Automation Alley Smart Zone, which we're working jointly with Southfield and Port Huron.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Miller? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move I eight, approve of, approval of the Joint Local Development Finance Authority Troy Subcommittee Proposed Fiscal Year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen budget, as printed.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Gottlieb, that we approve I eight, which is the approval of the Joint Local Development Finance Authority Troy Subcommittee Proposed Fiscal Year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen budget, as printed in the agenda. Discussion. I'd just like to point out that this is all important to keeping the Automation Alley's headquarters in Troy, which we all believe is very important to Troy. So, thank you for your work, Mark, and the committee. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Somebody like to move the resolution? Councilman Pennington?
I'd like to move the consent agenda, all items as printed.
Moved by Councilman Pennington, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the agenda packet this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here this evening on a consent agenda item, they've all been approved. Next is memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none submitted this evening, so we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, and I will call on Barry Johnson, Good evening.
Good evening. Barry Johnson, two-eight-three-five, East Square Lake Road, Troy, forty-eight-year resident. The property's been in our family since nineteen forty. I'd like to talk about volunteer tree planting. There's been a loss of trees in Troy, in Troy's streets and parks caused by both the Emerald Ash Borer and attrition. It's been reported that fourteen hundred trees will need to be planted over the next five years. In the nineteen sixties, the city of Detroit lost five hundred thousand trees to the Dutch Elm disease. In nineteen eighty-nine, the greening of Detroit to five-oh-one-three-C was founded to replace these trees. In two thousand and one, the Emerald Ash Borer infestation started in the southeast Michigan. Since nineteen eighty-nine, the greening of Detroit has planted eighty-eight thousand trees in Detroit with volunteers. During the last twenty-five years, it has achieved a survival rate greater than ninety-two percent. There have been no incidents of vehicle accidents, assaults, thefts, or any other problems, with thousands of volunteers on Detroit's main or residential streets during this time. I am proposing that the city of Troy investigate the use of volunteers and the greening's method to plant these fourteen hundred trees. The advantage is, obviously, a reduced fiscal cost, including, and the better use of funds. The environmental benefits are many, including improved air quality, less stormwater runoff, reduced energy costs, which are shaped provided by trees, and increased home values. Community, an effort such as this will unite the community, bringing it together, where civic organizations, religious education, or social and block clubs can interact and unite to improve their neighborhoods and make the city a true tree city. The vision statement says that we want to build a sense of community, encouraging volunteerism.
Mr. Johnson, just move the microphone in front of your paper there, it's kind of...
You can't hear me, or it's...
It's rubbing on the paper there.
Sorry.
Okay, great, thank you.
Shall I start again?
Uh...
I'm willing to, I'm willing to volunteer to capacity to aid this effort. There are many nonprofits in this country doing this, Tree People of Los Angeles, Trees Atlanta, Friends of the Urban Forest in San Francisco, and Two Million Trees New York. So, okay?
I like it.
Wow, I got fifty-one seconds left.
I do. Thank you for being within the time period.
Good.
Thank you, I think it's a good idea.
Oh, that was it? This is, that's your, that's the response?
No, not yet, not yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I?
Next, I'll call on Susie Schwab, Troy resident.
Do I have to give my address?
Could you pull the microphone? Thank you.
Like that? Do I have to give my address?
You do not.
Okay. First off, I want to start off by saying that I'm a dog lover, and I had a dog for fourteen years. The way the law is currently written, anyone can turn the area between the sidewalk in the street into a dog urinal, which, as we all know, kills the grass, and the homeowner who spends two to three thousand dollars for new sod to improve the curb appeal of their house has to put up with it. Currently, some dog owners of an adjoining sub, which is slightly, just slightly a little more upscale than our sub, bring their dogs over solely for the purpose of doing their business on our lawns, and we're kind of like getting tired of it. Like I said, I just got done spending almost three thousand dollars last June for new sod, and they're allowed to come over and urinate and burn up my grass again. I mean, it's terrible, something needs to be done. They don't even pretend anymore that they're walking their dogs. They bring their dogs over, there are like four houses, and they kind of like go between the four houses, and as soon as the dog does their number, they're back home. I did a lot of landscaping last year, so I was out all summer long, early in the morning. When a guy comes out of his home at seven-thirty in the morning, wearing a bathrobe, you know he's not out to walk his dog, and that's what he did. He came around from his sub into our sub, he saw me, so he went across the street to my neighbors and let the dog urinate there. They've gotten so brazen that I have it on my phone, on Saturday, this is not the first time it's happened, someone who owns a big, big dog, almost looks like a mini pony, is now going up on people's private lawn and urinating on her hostess. This is the fifth time I have seen this dog go there and do it. I would like to see the council come up with some kind of addition to the ordinance there, saying that you cannot allow your dogs to urinate in that area. Let them urinate in the street, walk your dog around your own property, you know, before you take them for a walk, rather than to ruin someone else's property. What rights do we have? Shouldn't I have the same right as everyone else to expect, if I want to put the time and the money into it, to have a nice-looking lawn? Their lawns look nice. You come into our subdivision, our lawns don't look nice, because it's their dogs that are damaging it. It's not the dogs in our sub. Those people are responsible, and their dogs don't urinate in other people's lawns. But these people do, and they sit there, and, or they stand there, and they just tell you, "I can do it, because it's city property." Well, the city needs to do something. I paid for that sod. I'm the one who upkeeps the sod. I pay to have someone come in and fertilize it. It's my money, it's my time. Yes, it's the city's property. However, that also reflects on my house and what my house looks like from the curb, right? I mean, if I need to get a petition for you guys to take this serious, I'm not the only one who feels this way. People just go, "What can you do? You can't fight city hop, that's the law," you know, so...
Thank you.
I will get a petition, if need be.
There is, there is some action that you can have taken, and would somebody from staff be willing to sit down with Ms. Schwab? Sure.
We were told today that there was nothing that we could do.
Well...
You know, we can go out there and spray with some repellent stuff.
You want to hang around for a little bit, we'll have, we'll, we'll talk to you about it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up to speak this evening. Next is city council, city administration response, reply to public comment. I'd just briefly like to reply to Mr. Johnson, I think it's a good idea. Is somebody from staff willing to sit down with, with him and, and talk about that? I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, please stay. Was it Jerry Johnson?
Yeah.
Barry.
Oh, all right.
Oh, okay. If you could stay, so we can get your contact information, though, because I don't have it. If you could stay and give me your contact information, we never know what he's going to do.
See, Kurt was proactive there.
Thanks.
Any other comments from council? Councilman Gottlieb?
I want to thank you for coming before us and expressing your concern, and your comment that you hope we take it seriously. I hope you know that, certainly I do, and I know the fellow council members do, we receive many comments, mostly email, but some people, and I assure you, we do take it seriously, so, and I know that our staff will address your concerns to the best of their abilities. They've been very, very responsive, so, thanks for coming. We do take it seriously.
Any other comments? Anyone from staff wish to respond this evening?
We'll, we'll talk after with the two residents, for sure.
Thank you. Next, there are no council referrals, and so next we will have council comments. Any council comments this evening? Councilwoman Hoderick?
Just brought to mind that this Saturday is the open house at the Troy Police Department, and with all the discussion about law enforcement across the nation, if you have questions or are curious about how our police department runs, what its community policing philosophy is, the quality of our department, the open house is a nice opportunity to, to stop in and see what it's all about. We have one of the best departments, and seeing that firsthand is affirming, it also teaches you how you can be part of the safety presence that is in Troy. Chief Maroffen comments, when we hear our safety accolades, that it's not just the P D, it is the Fire Department, it's our D P W, and it is our residents in the business community working in partnership. So if you want to learn more about that, see, see our department and what it's made of, Saturday is a great opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Next is reports. Any comments from council about the reports that were in the agenda this evening? I know there was one report that was placed on the table for council this evening. I don't know if there are any questions, but I had a discussion earlier today, I'm satisfied with that report personally. We will move to comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy, not residents of Troy and not from Troy businesses, and I will call on Jim Valente. I hope I got that right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I want to speak on a proposal, a bid for major pavement marking. I believe everybody has a copy, that was awarded to the wrong contractor. It should have been awarded to RS Contracting, who I represent. If you look at the second page of the sheets I gave, it says that the local contractor will get an opportunity to match the low bid if they're within five percent. The definition, the next page of five percent is, is varying definitions, basically it means to the limits of five percent, not to exceed. It even says at or to some amount, not exceeding. If you look at the next page, I have highlighted the total bid amounts. The one on the left was RS Contracting's low bid, the other one was PK Contracting. The last page is, is the proper way to calculate it, which would be the low bid, our bid, times one point oh-five, which is the equivalent of a hundred and five percent, giving a fixed dollar amount. So, with... So, within 5% means not to exceed that dollar amount, which PK Contracting exceeds it by $180, meaning that their bid should not even have been considered, they shouldn't have gotten the option to match the low bid, according to the proposal. I brought this up to Mary Beth. She said that she calculated, and it's within 5%. She explained how she calculated it. She said she took the high bid, 5% of the high bid, which is a totally different number, and backed it down. I explained to her, that's not the proper way to do it. She came back to me and said that she did calculate it improperly, but it's still within 5%, because it's slightly over, and she's deciding to round it down, round it off, down to 5%. I said, "There's no provision saying you can round it down. Otherwise, it's open to interpretation, how much above 5% can it be, and still round it down?" That's why 1.05 times the low bid is the only way to do it. It's a fixed number, and clearly, PK Contracting's bid is higher than that fixed number. Within 5% means not to exceed, and it does. So, I understand the council was given a recommendation based on an improper calculation. I just ask that the council reconsider and award the bid to the proper contractor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes those that have signed up to speak. Items on or not on the agenda from members outside of Troy. We do have a closed session this evening, so we will adjourn for the closed session. Thank you for coming this evening.